Welcomeed as you came in tonight by our Fire Chief Howard Bailey and Police Captain D.W. Smith. They served as our greeters. It is March 19th, 2024 at 7:00 PM, and this is the regular City Commission meeting of the City of Orman Beach. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Daughtry, Commissioner from Zone 1 Lori Talland.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Commissioner from Zone 2 Travis Sargent.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left and your right, Commissioner from Zone 3 Susan Persis.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Our Deputy Mayor and Zone 4 Commissioner Harold Brierly.
Good evening, everyone.
Our City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and way to the left and way to your right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey, and again, our Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington, and at this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight, given by Chaplain Sam Mercado from Advent Health.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, what a privilege to be able to gather here tonight and to call upon you, to say thank you for your mercy and protection as we have made it to another spring. Father, we thank you for watching over each of us and our city of Orman Beach. Tonight, we also lift up to you our mayor and city leaders, and thank you for watching over them and giving them wisdom and guidance in handling the business and concerns of our city and its people. Bless this meeting tonight, and guide the decisions that will be made. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This time, it's a special time in our meeting where we recognize individuals and events that are happening, and I'd like to ask Debbie Cruck-Forster to come forward. Debbie does amazing things in our community, and she doesn't get nearly enough recognition for all she does. She doesn't ask for it either. She's very humble, but I'm proud, on behalf of the entire commission, to present her with this proclamation. And Debbie, I'll ask you to hold that while I read it, give folks just a little glimpse into some of which Debbie Cruck-Forster, the founder and commander of Orman Strong, has dedicated her life to serving and supporting the military, veterans, first responders, and their families. Through her organization, she has bridged the gap between the community and those who serve, enriching the lives of American heroes. And whereas in 2015, Debbie established Orman Strong when her husband and 200 of his comrades were deployed for a one-year mission in Afghanistan. This deployment served as the catalyst for her dedication, supporting deployed soldiers, first responders, and their families. To raise awareness and gather community support, she took the initiative to organize a daily vigil consisting of a 2.6-mile morning walk over the Granada Bridge. These walks have continued every single day for nine years, symbolizing the enduring support and appreciation for those who serve. And whereas after the safe return of the deployed soldier in 2016, Orman Strong redirected its mission towards assisting veterans, first responders, and their families during their transition back to civilian life. Orman Strong implemented various programs and services to address the crucial needs involving job placement and mental health support. The organization also collaborates with the Jerry Dolliner Food Bank, addressing the needs of homeless veterans by ensuring access to basic necessities like food. And whereas, one of the notable achievements of Orman Strong, securing 20 years' worth of rent for the Veterans Museum and Education Center. This achievement stands as a testament to the commitment to honoring the sacrifices made by servicemen and women, as well as preserving their stories and legacy for future generations. And whereas Debbie's selflessness and unwavering dedication has left a mark on the lives of those she serves, Orman Beach is fortunate to have such an extraordinary individual leading the charge in supporting our American heroes and their families. Now, therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire Orman Beach City Commission, do hereby proclaim March 19th, 2024, as a day to recognize and celebrate Debbie Cruck-Forster in Orman Beach, and urge all residents to show their gratitude and appreciation for her commitment to those who have served our nation. Congratulations, Debbie. We're going to get a picture, but before I do that, I want to present Debbie with the key to the city. I can't think of a more deserving person, and so it's an honor to present this to you. Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
You're all my heroes, and if it wasn't for our military veterans or first responders that put their lives on the line for us every day, and some are both, we wouldn't be able to do what we do, and we'll be here till the end for you. There is no end, but anybody, any community that forgets their first responders and their military veterans will itself be forgotten, and Orman Beach will never forget their military veterans, first responders. I promise you. Take care. Thank you. Orman Strong out.
All right. Next, we have a couple special recognitions. We'll start with Sergeant John Devine. Sergeant? Do you want to bring your family up? Or, perfect. Whoever you want to come up. This doesn't happen very often. Okay, that's fine. Oh, one of my drawers. Here we go. It's an honor to present Sergeant Devine with this proclamation, and I'm going to read it so you can see what he did to earn this. Whereas Sergeant John Devine, a veteran of the United States Navy, began his career with the Orman Beach Police Department on May 21st, 2012. While serving in the Navy, Sergeant Devine successfully obtained an Associate of Arts degree in Criminal Justice Technology from St. John's River State College. And whereas Sergeant Devine recently graduated from the University of Louisville's Southern Police Institute's 94th Command Officer Development Course held in Claremont, Florida, this five-month intensive program comprising of two-week intervals focuses on the development of leadership and professional skills. And whereas Sergeant Devine brings a broad range of life experiences from his military service and 12 years of law enforcement, his roles have included patrol officer, field training officer, corporal, and sergeant. He has served with the Outreach Dare Unit, where he consistently maintained positive relationships with the youth of the community, and he has provided services as a certified crime prevention practitioner. And whereas Sergeant Devine was an inaugural founding member of the Orman Beach Special Response Team, and currently serves as the Criminal Investigations Unit Supervisor. Sergeant Devine has demonstrated his dedication to the law enforcement profession, being away from home and family, to enhance his knowledge, skills, and abilities. His exceptional work ethic and unwavering commitment to duty makes him an accomplished, invaluable member of the Orman Beach Police Department, the city, and our entire community. Now, therefore, based on all that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the Orman Beach City Commission, do hereby proclaim today, March 19th, 2024, as a day to recognize Sergeant Devine, and urge our residents to join in commending Sergeant for his accomplishments and unwavering service to our city. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
All right. Last, but not least, Sergeant Jay Brennan. Department on September 23rd, 2003, and successfully achieved an Associate of Science degree in Criminal Justice Technology from Daytona State College on May 10th, 2019. Whereas Sergeant Brennan recently graduated from the University of Louisville's Southern Police Institute's 94th Command Officer Development Course held in Claremont, Florida, this five-month intensive program comprising of two-week intervals focuses on the development of leadership and professional skills. Whereas Sergeant Brennan brings a wealth of experience from his 20-year tenure with the Orman Beach Police Department, his background includes roles as patrol officer, field training officer, corporal, and sergeant, serving with the Outreach Dare Unit, which he consistently maintained positive relationships with the youth of the community, and serving as a certified crime prevention practitioner. And whereas being the senior supervisor of Patrol Shift Alpha, Sergeant Brennan leads his squadron with pride and dedication. He also serves as a defensive tactics instructor, sharing his expertise with fellow officers and civilians. And whereas Sergeant Brennan has demonstrated his dedication to the law enforcement profession, being away from home and family, to enhance his knowledge, skills, and abilities. His exceptional work ethic and unwavering commitment to duty make him an accomplished, invaluable member of the Police Department, city, and community. Now, therefore, based on all of that, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim today, March 19th, 2024, as a day to recognize Sergeant Jay Brennan in the City of Orman Beach, and urge all residents to join in commending him for his accomplishments and unwavering service to our city. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. At this time, we will move to audience remarks. I have one card this evening for audience remarks from Jeff Boyle.
Jeff Boyle, 614 North Halifax Drive. I've been the ARP President of the Orman Chapter since 2017, and in that role, it was my privilege and honor to invite Chobon Daly on Valentine's Day to our Wednesday meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of the month at the Unitarian Church. She was a delight, as she was in all the years I worked with her, putting on baseball card shows in the casemates. Last Wednesday, we were privileged to have Robert Carolyn as our speaker, and he was amazing. And I have to say, after witnessing his talk and learning about what he does, if he ever leaves us, we're going to need three people to replace him. And by the way, in June, we're going to have Becky Parker also as our speaker, and we're looking forward to that. It occurred to me that these employees approach their work with great joyful competence. They take ownership of the city. Their interactions with our citizens are super positive. And then it occurred to me that all our employees do that. All the interactions are positive. Maybe some of the interactions may be negative, but the employees are always positive and cheerful and caring. And I think that we know that institutions, government, schools, the people that work in the trenches tend to take on the character and style of the leaders. So for that reason, I also want to thank tonight the mayor and the commission, all the people on the dais, Joyce Shanahan, your style and the character of your leadership spills over to your staff. And I want to thank all the people who serve and protect us. We're really blessed. This city is blessed because we have great aesthetic and material assets with world-class residential communities. But I've always felt that aside from their beauty, our greatest asset is our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, the minutes have been sent for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections?
With approval, second.
Hearing none, and having a proper motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. serves as the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city, and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As Chairman of the CRA, I will open the public hearing and ask our secretary to read 7A by title.
Resolution number 2024-37, a resolution of the City Commission individually, enacting as the Community Redevelopment Agency for the Central Business District and adjacent areas, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to Service Agreement between the city slash agency and Orman Main Street, Inc., and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2024-37, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards, and let me look here. Just didn't know if there was any discussion, commissioners.
I move approval of resolution number 2024-37.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll show that passing unanimously. Close the public hearings, reconvene the City Commission meeting, and we are now on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I request that item 8, 9 be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed separately?
Absolutely. Eight, you said eight, nine?
Eight, N.
Oh, eight, N. No problem. Anyone else wish to pull?
Eight, N.
Eight, N. There's a Nancy.
N is a Nancy.
N, N, for Nancy.
Anyone else wish to pull any other consent agenda items? Just need a motion.
Move approval, absent, N.
Second.
Who've been seconded, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eight, N.
Disposition item titled Request for Proposal Agent of Record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I speak on that?
Please do.
I think staff should have provided two options for this particular request. There are two primary ways to solicit property and casualty insurance. One is to request for an agent of record. The pros of that is it provides technical knowledge of a broker who bids on insurance, but the negative is it may limit the number of responses we receive. The second one is a RFP for insurance coverages. The pros of that are that we get a greater number of proposals, which usually equals a cost savings, and the con is that the staff doesn't have the same, they may not have the same expertise as a broker. That being said, it would be staff's recommendation to move for an RFP for insurance coverage rather than an agent or broker of record. So that's what we would ask you to consider tonight.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions, and Kelly's here if you have any additional questions.
Commission, any questions? Commissioner Sargent?
I think this is the right time to do it. Randy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I will be abstaining from this as I work for an insurance company, and I think now is the appropriate time to remove myself from it from this point going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Randy, did you want to speak on that?
No, sir.
Commissioner Talland.
Yes, thank you. And I, too, would like to disclose that my son works for a company that could potentially submit a proposal to the RFP, and that I will be abstaining from voting as well on this matter. I did speak with our city attorney. I did speak to the Ethics Committee with the State of Florida, and based on this particular matter, it's not likely that this is prohibited voting conflict right now, but I will be abstaining just to avoid the appearance of a conflict.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, may I add one more thing?
Yes.
Staff will be utilizing the services of a consultant to help us with this process as our risk manager is retiring and will not be able to assist us in that process.
Commissioner Persis.
And I just agree with the city manager. I think this is a great idea that we do this. So, thank you for pulling that.
Thank you. So, the motion is to continue N and come back with a RFP process recommendation?
Yes. Well, just like we normally do, we would prepare the RFP, put it on the agenda. You will review that RFP. Anybody in the public can comment on the RFP, and if there aren't any changes, then we would release that RFP. But we'll send you an advanced copy of all of that.
Okay. Commission, what's left of the commission. Is there any?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierly?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. I'm not sure about the process exactly, but I think they would call you.
You can call on the other two commissioners, and then they can just abstain for the record.
Commissioner Talland?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sargent?
Abstain.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Are there any commissioners at this time who wish to comment on any consent agenda items? Commissioner Talland, and then Commissioner Persis.
I have always a lot to say. 8A, Main Street, it was an easy ask. Just wanted to say I appreciate all that you all do, and I think this is a no-brainer, and I'm glad that just flew through. Also, to our firefighters, items 8B, C, D, and E all relate to you. I hope you feel that this commission does support you in all that you do, and we're very appreciative of you as well. Let's see, 8M. So it seems like this project started in 2009 with some flooding, and it's now 2024, and the bids have gone out. It has had a process. I'm just pointing out that we do work really slow, and I'm really glad that we're doing something.
I think it was related to getting grant funding for that project.
I gotcha. I gotcha. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Persis.
Yes, I, too, just first of all, want to thank our firefighters that are here in the room, hoping we were going to vote for this. And yes, that is what I think we all want to do up on this dais, that we support you, we appreciate you, and we're going to give you the materials that you need to do your job to protect our citizens. So thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you. And if there's no other comments, we'll go on to reports, suggestions, and requests. Tonight, we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to give you an update on the fire that we had at the PAC. Most of the affected drywall has been removed and to improve drying. Some carpet has been removed to allow proper drying of concrete. Asbestos and lead tests came back clean. Most of the four storage bays under the stage, that's where some of our groups store their material, has been cleared and stored for the remainder of the drying process. Paul Davis Restoration has been hard at work with fans, dehumidifiers, air scrubbers, and generators, and they're working around the clock to get the facility dried out. We had a backflow, a fire line backflow prevention inspection report came back clean. Staff met with Bomar Construction on-site to determine what supplies can be ordered now to keep the renovation process moving in a timely manner. Fire inspectors are working to determine the root cause of the fire, which will take approximately three to four weeks. The insurance company has put on notice the possible intent to pursue damages from Economy Electric, the suppliers of the affected equipment, and the fire panel monitoring company, Village Key. So that's all the updates I have at this time. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Joyce, any questions? Commission on that? Thank you.
Just a couple other updates regarding meetings in general. April 2nd is a regular commission meeting. April 16th is a Tamoka Oaks Commission meeting, I mean, Commission meeting. It's going to be held here in Commission Chambers. Staff has been working to coordinate using Room 103 and the training room, as well as the
Overflow.
Atrium for overflows. We will have screens available in 103 and the training room so they can see what's going on. Skip, who does all of our televising of things, and he will be here to televise the commission meeting, which will be streamed to YouTube, and residents at home and in the other rooms will be able to see that. We will section off this, my right side of the chambers, for those queuing up to speak, so we can do that. We're considering numbering our comment cards so we can make sure people are lined up to speak in, so it goes in an orderly fashion. So we're working ahead to make sure that flows through smoothly. Engineering has completed the Arbor Drive drainage project this week. The focus of this project is the alleviation of historic flooding on the roadway, and included the installation of five new drainage inlets and the replacement of 550 feet of undersized piping. Engineering and their contractor were assisted in this project by Water Distribution, who handled relocation of utilities in the area, Stormwater, who provided assistance during construction and inspection of new systems. This is one of the many projects that were identified back in the no-name storm of 2009. A lot of these projects take a while to get St. John's funding and other grant funding. Hazard mitigation grant funding is often available, and sometimes we have to wait for that. FDOT has completed the South Atlantic pedestrian safety improvements project, and so we're really pleased to see how those have turned out. really pleased to see how those have turned out. Business Park Drive is, we approved that tonight, is that correct? So we'll be starting on that project, and then, come, couple of leisure services, Rock Your Socks Party at the Nova Rec Center, Once Upon a Storytime, very, very popular. Tickets are free, but you have to register ahead. Siobhan Daley, someone spoke of her tonight, she does a great job. Thank you, Mr. Boyle, for mentioning her, she really does an outstanding job for the city, and that's a hugely popular program. Movies on Halifax on April 5th will be The Princess and the Frog, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have of me tonight.
Any questions for the city manager?
Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Assistant City Manager Claire Woodley?
Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware the workshop schedule needs to be modified due to the Tamoka Oaks rescheduling, and thank you for your flexibility on that. So we have the three workshops, the series of three, it'll be April 2nd and May 7th, which you should have on your calendars, and then we've added the date of May 21st. So if there's no conflicts, we'll proceed with those three dates.
Can you explain which each one is going to be?
Sure, the April 2nd is CIP updates, that'll include Casson Park, as well as a brief discussion on the overnight docking, Andy Romano Park update, and then a couple miscellaneous project updates. May 7th will be strategic plan initiatives, so we'll discuss the new police department and EOC west of town, and the use of 56 North Beach Street. And then May 21st will also be a strategic plan initiative, that'll include the upgrade to city commission chambers technology and the land use study for Riverbend. Okay?
Thank you.
No conflicts, is that good? We'll confirm those, okay. And then I just want to thank all of our residents for their flexibility and understanding with rescheduling Tamoka Oaks as well. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might come back here a minute? We have repaired a set of stairs at Andy Romano Beachfront Park. Those are the ones adjacent to the splash pad, so those should be, let's see, Robert, they should be open this week, so in time for the big spring break. So we'll wait on those other repairs because they coincide with the seawall replacement, but at least we have a set of stairs that go down there, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and City Manager, or City Attorney Randy Hayes?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Deputy Mayor Brierley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I guess I just want to say, Robert, I'm so sorry, the PAC, seems like we take 10 steps forward and 20 steps backwards, but it is a beautiful facility, it was a great, it's been a great renovation, and I know when we get back, when we get it back, it'll be better than when it was, what it was, when it was redone, so. So that was unfortunate. I did attend the, and I think the rest of the commission attended the Team Volusia meeting, the Volusia Economic, Team Volusia Economic Development Committee, and a lot of great information there. I want to congratulate our city manager, Joyce Shanahan, for being reappointed or back on the board of directors, I guess as treasurer, is that correct? As treasurer of Team Volusia? That's right, that's right. And our outgoing chairman, Phil Maroni, and the incoming chairman, Sands Laster. Also want to congratulate Debbie Cruck Forster, she does the Orman Strong, and she's just a phenomenal person, does a great job with that. Also want to congratulate our two sergeants, Sergeant Dovey and Sergeant Brennan, for their accomplishments and everything they do for the city. One question I did want to ask, and maybe Sean, I don't know if you've heard anything, sometime back, I think we were going to talk to Volusia County about possibly investigating, putting a traffic signal at the Aberdeen subdivision where that new subdivision lines up across the street. If nothing else, I think what we could do is we could possibly, if everyone else is good with it, those folks have been wanting a traffic signal for quite some time. The problem the county had at the time was there was never a lot of traffic, but now since that subdivision's been constructed across the street, their driveways line up. So it may, at this point, warrant a traffic signal, plus, I'm thinking with the amount of children that will live in those subdivisions on the, I guess it's the east side of Clyde Morris, that would give them a crossing to get over to Hinson Middle School, give them a signalized crosswalk, so. That would certainly be beneficial for the folks out there on Clyde Morris and for the folks that live in Aberdeen.
And I remember we talked about this previously, and it was that same justification, that it was prior to those, that subdivision that kind of straddles the line with Daytona Beach.
Right.
What I think that the best way that we can do this is take this to the traffic safety team, where we've got representatives from cities, Volusia County attends, DOT attends, since it's a county roadway, let's start with that. What they, what that will kind of initiate them to do is do a warrant for a signal warrant, and I think that that, that should be a good kickstart, and I think that they can justify it since it's been a while, since we took a look at it last time.
Sure, yeah.
So we will get with that, and I'll follow up with county public works and traffic engineering, so.
Thank you, sir. Especially, I think, one thing we certainly highlight there is the potential for the pedestrian safety with the kids crossing from those subdivisions across Clyde Morris to get down to...
It's a long way from Strickland Road to Strickland Range up to Hand Avenue without any other good opportunities, so both, you know, both for pedestrians trying to make the crossing, people in some of those, coming out of those doctor's offices that are along there, you have to go up to Aberdeen to make the U-turn to head southbound, so I think that there's a lot of things that people would, that taking a look at a signal warrant that would come into play with this one, so I think, I think it's a great suggestion, and I think timing is right.
Thanks, sir. And lastly, I just want to, I would like to thank Jeff Boyle for his comments this evening regarding our city employees, our city staff, and our residents. I truly believe that we are blessed in Orman Beach to have, you know, residents who are engaged and a city staff that I think is second to none, and I think their positive, I think their positive attitudes come from the leadership from Joyce and her staff, so I'd just like to thank him for his comments. Mr. Mayor, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Commissioner Talland?
All right. Stop looking at my notes. So Team Volusia, we did attend, and Harold, you did a nice recap on that, and I did too want to just congratulate Mrs. Shanahan, Ms. Shanahan for her service to Team Volusia. It's really nice when you go to events that is recognized in the county and all over, and you just only hear such good words about your city manager. So, and, and she does a lot of work, not only for us, but for other organizations, so congratulations for being acknowledged and all your hard work. The Garden Club of Halifax Country hosted another successful educational day at Badner Park a few weeks ago. They invited a Brownie troop, and they educated the Brownies on native plants, native plants, and all the pollinators. So it is a park that's being used, and I'm very appreciative that that park is there. We do, I do want to report a little bit on the National League of Cities that we attended. So it is a few days of lots of meetings and general sessions, but you have the opportunity to take what they call deep dive sessions, and my heart has always been with mental health, drug use, homelessness, those type of issues, so I did spend a little extra time listening to those, and, you know, you try to bring back some nuggets that you can bring back to the city to use within the city. One deep dive session that a few of us attended was the Aviation Deep Dive, and I just wanted to share that, you know, one of the topics was the use of drones, and how drones are now being used for delivery of products, surveillance of property, emergency response. So it seems to be something that maybe as a city, we may want to be a little more proactive, and if we don't have any ordinances already in place, we may want to look at that, because they probably will eventually want to come to our city if they're not here yet. I do know, like, Amazon and some other large, big-box stores are using them to drop off products, even though we're a small town, I think we need to be ready and proactive. The other thing I learned at another session was, you know, there's a lot of availability of grants and monies, and the one that perked my attention was there was a lot of police grants available, and they're available for funding the police with recruitment and retention, and I don't know if that's something as a staff that we could take a look at. I know that federal money trickles to the state and then to the local level. I don't know how available it is or any of the particulars, but if we could at least look at it, maybe we can pay for a recruitment agency or even a recruitment position, because I know we're struggling with getting police at this point. I want to make a couple announcements, the Celtic Celtic Festival is April 20th to 21st, correct? And Jewish Heritage Festival is April 6th and 7th. I do want to thank again, thank Jeff Boyle for those very sweet comments. It's nice to hear good things, especially when you're sitting up here, and it's very appreciative. And I do want to publicly congratulate Debbie Cruck, she is the most dedicated person I know to veterans, and I'm sure you all have seen her carry that flag across the bridge every morning, whether it's raining, cold, hot, and she's got her army that goes with her, and congratulations to Sergeant Dovey and Sergeant Jay Brennan for their leadership and service to the community, and good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Talland, Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think between Deputy Mayor Brierley and you, you summed it up. Last night, I attended the school board held their community meeting at Osceola, and I got to tell you, I went into it with an open mind, hoping that it was going to be very positive. It was one of the most hostile, unorganized meetings I think I've ever attended. The COO, she didn't even know the three classifications of offenses that these students fall into to be placed at Riverview, which I just find absolutely absurd. They tried to put the blame back onto the city commission, and I think all of y'all should feel very upset at this, and thankfully, our city manager stood up and let them know that it was not us, that it's school board property, and it is their responsibility, and it's very unfortunate that we have to defend ourself to our residents because they want to put this back onto us and pass the buck because they have failed us in their decisions since August of 2021, when it was supposed to be a K-5 to K-8 decision, and they made a motion to relocate it to Cortona. So now we're defending, I had to defend myself to 10 residents last night because they said, well, how did you know about this? We didn't know anything about it, it was complete the school board, and they failed us. They also told one of my residents that's been fighting to have the AC units turned off for two years, the lady has been sleeping in her living room for two years because it's so noisy. They told her just hang on for a few more months, they're going to be moved. You're going to tell a resident to wait till summertime? I mean, where's the, I'm just absolutely flabbergasted at the way they treat our residents. It's absurd. Mr. Mayor, I think that, I'd like to make a motion to have staff bring back all of, all of our contracts, whatever we have to deal with the school board, for us to maybe have a workshop and review, whether it's, I know we share responsibilities with Osceola, cleaning up part of it, part of it at Orman Beach Middle School. These are, I think we need to find a way to get out of these, the school board needs to be responsible for maintaining these properties, not the residents of Orman Beach. They are not, as I said, they are not a good partner with the city of Orman, and I would like to thank city manager Ms. Shanahan for standing up for all of us commissioners. And you know, if Ms. Shanahan stands up for something, you know it's pretty bad, because she does not like to stand up for anything. And when I saw her hand go up, when I saw her hand go up last night, I saw the chief and Captain Roos look at each other like, oh, no. So, thank you. Also, I'd like to thank the officers for their accomplishments, receiving those, and also to their families, you know. I think we often forget that behind these first responders are their spouses and kids that have to sacrifice, so thank you to them as well. Or else, I'm sorry, I'm just very frustrated, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Boyle, I guess I'll be the third one to say, thank you. We do have the best employees. With that, Mr. Mayor, have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Sargent, Commissioner Persis?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. All my, all the commissioners before me have said almost everything I wanted to say, but I am going to have, I am going to repeat a few things that are meaningful to me. I want to thank Jeff Boyle for your kind words, we don't always get those, and they are very much appreciated, and we appreciate it in our hearts, too. I also, Debbie Cruck Forster, Sergeant John Dovey, and Sergeant Jay Brennan. I've known Sergeant Brennan, I don't know, so long, I think 24 years or something, or was, or 20, I think 2003 is when I think I first met her, right when he started, and he was just a hit with the kids way back then, he's just a wonderful man, as all the other two are, so we're so lucky to have citizens like this in our city, and that we recognize them and bring attention to them is so important, so that, that's very meaningful to me. I also want to talk a little bit about the National League of Cities Conference that we went to. We went to regular sessions, we went to deep dive sessions, we really spent a couple of days, you know, all day long in sessions, and they were very good. I attended, I'm on the national, I guess, I'm on the Energy and Environment and Natural Resources Committee, and what they basically talked about was improving waste management. They prioritize things for every state in the United States, and some of these things that they prioritize were improving waste management and recycling, municipal liability protection for PFAS and in legislation, and that would protect cities that did not cause or contribute to PFAS, which is contamination in communities, so I thought those were some good things that they're focusing on. And then we had the, we got to meet with Congressman Walts briefly, we talked to his aides, and that was just a nice meeting, we got our picture with him, and shared some of our concerns that we wanted to improve upon in our city, but we did talk about, I was so happy that we got to talk about the fuel farm and how we were so against that, that was kind of our, we couldn't wait, we saved it for last, we couldn't wait to talk to him about that, and, and so I think that they listened and understand our deep, deep concerns for our citizens here, so hopefully that's going to go away. And with that, that's all I have tonight, I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Commissioner, and I wanted to give some credit to Chief Godfrey. He encourages education throughout the department, educational opportunities, I think it's awesome that Sergeant Dovey and Sergeant Brennan took advantage of that, but the leadership with that starts at the top, and it is fantastic, not only for, for the police department, but for the entire city, that we have officers who are willing to take that time away from their families and achieve those extra designations, and so we really, truly do appreciate that. Commission, thank you all for going to the National League of Cities, they're always cutting-edge, which Orman Beach generally is, with ideas and thoughts on best practices, and so when you expose yourself to that and bring it back, it just keeps us, keeps us at the forefront, so thank you for taking that time away from your families as well. Touching on the homeless, I know we're getting ready to have a workshop based on the unanimous direction of the commission to request that, but I saw in the paper today, the News Journal, that New Smyrna has a plan for the homeless issue, so Deland now has come out with their plan, Daytona Beach, I think a couple weeks ago, came out with their plan, New Smyrna has a plan that involves a couple extra positions, and I want to make sure that we have our workshop in time if we decide to pursue that option, I'm sure that's one of the options that the staff is going to bring back to us, and we need additional positions or equipment to make that happen, that we have the opportunity to, to get that in the budget. And then the governor, I believe, is going to sign the anti-camping ordinance soon as well, which should bolster all of our efforts, I hope, but just wanted to point that out, if you haven't seen it, please look it up. Joyce, I don't know if we can provide that to everybody, but, and then, Commissioner Joyce, I don't know if we can provide that to everybody, but, and then Commissioner Sargent, you're all choked up about the Osceola issue, which is understandable. I wondered if maybe before the workshop, if we could just ask staff to put together a report with all of the agreements that we have with the school board and what schools they apply to and what they cover and how much they cost, and then decide where to go from there. Maybe we do need a workshop, but before we do that, if we could just get the information so we know what we're starting with. Commission, does anybody have an issue kind of starting out that way?
Yeah.
So that looks unanimous, thank you, Joyce. And yeah, I was disappointed to hear the result of that meeting as well, Commissioner. I could see why it would be upsetting. You know, the school board is a billion-dollar organization. That meeting could have gone so well. Just, I'm sorry, you know? Mea culpa, we didn't do this right and you deserve better as our taxpayers. If they had started with that kind of attitude, I think residents would have been a lot more receptive to the information that was being provided to them. And then if they indicated, you know, and listened to what the residents' concerns are, from what I've heard, the concerns are that these students are going to break out into the neighborhood and cause problems. So maybe the school board could have said, look, we hear you, we're going to provide extra fencing, enhanced fencing and screening, we're going to provide extra security throughout the school, expensive cameras, so that everything is documented and controlled. Normally we have one officer at our school, we're going to provide two or three to make sure that if there's an incident, people can respond immediately. And then they could have brought residents who live around the current school who could testify as to what it's been like. And I mention that because when I was doing the interviews on the lack of communication with the school board, with the television stations, one of the cameramen mentioned, you know, what's the problem? I've lived next to that school for 27 years and I've never had a problem. And I thought, well, that's something that people should hear so they can factor that into their decision-making. But regrettably, the meeting did not go that way last night, and I'm sorry to hear that. I don't know how they rebound from that, but I will say, the leadership starts at the top, and I was really shocked that the superintendent was not there last night. I mean, I can't believe that. So I've asked the City Manager to set up a meeting with the superintendent to try to work on this issue. That's all I know that I can do. Perhaps the City Superintendent should come here and apologize to everybody for such a hot mess of a handling of this issue, but something needs to happen and it's really not a good situation. I think relationship with the school board is at an all-time low based on that, so we'll see where we go from there. But anyway, hate to end on a kind of a sour note, but Commissioner, I hope that addresses some of your concerns. I know we can't fix the whole thing, but with that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all.